East to match or to be more closely related to how things are zoned. I will do that. Is there anything aside from that like? Because keep in mind too that the future land use map is is aspirational in a way, so. If there are areas where you see development likely occurring that are not on here or designated as maybe ag or rural residential that may be more appropriate to be higher density residential in a in a neighborhood type format or commercial slash light industrial, um, that would be appropriate here too. So, anything further west, like so it appears that, um, these are all rural residential. The properties that are like basically where the the westernmost point where the uh, where the red parcels end. There's kind of like a cutout where there's green there. Does that make sense to you guys to keep that rural residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm saying to the ones.
Okay.
I'll go with that.
And then surrounding the lakes, does that look look like that makes sense to you guys there as well?
Yeah, I mean, I obviously it's the village and but, um, we want to show that under too, so yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good.
Okay.
I just wanted, I just wanna, I guess, see that commercial a little bit further to the east as you pointed out.
Yep.
Cause currently our plan today says, you know, we're looking at, you know, that ninety-one forty-six corridor there as far as for future growth.
Yep.
So.
Yep. And I, um, I think I, now that you mention it, I recall, I believe in intuition during public engagement noting that there was something going. Were there perhaps, or am I confusing out something else? Or, uh, medical facilities that one or.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They just opened up before, yeah.
Okay, then that's maybe, I think that's what she was referring to.
But that's right there. I mean, I think you have most of that.
Okay, okay.
If you bring that red over to the east a little further, yeah.
Perfect. Um, okay, and like you said, keep in mind that I I'm around if if you guys are rolling this over and have questions or feel like I missed the mark on something, um, I'm happy to talk through and accept comments. As for next steps, um, when you guys meet in September, um, my plan is to talk through the full draft with you guys then. So, because it'll be, you know, quite a bit of reading material, I will plan to get you guys a give at least two weeks for you guys to go through everything before the meeting happens, so you can kind of go in it with the, um, having had been able to spend time on it. So then we're looking at likely, um, probably the first week of September, um, I think. Or perhaps last week of August for that draft to come to an end. And then, so that will include also a stylized version that our, um, graphics team has designed, so you'll kind of see the the full, the whole thing, uh, and then we'll kind of work on the revision and comment process from there. And then we'll talk through what public.
Feel good about where we're at?
Yeah, I do. Um, I, I mean typically, this has been a pretty like painless process, I would say. Uh, more or less, cause you guys had a pretty solid idea of what you wanted and and so that's been, um, great to keep the ball rolling on things. It's only that because you guys meet every other month that things are taking a little bit longer, but as long as you guys are okay with that.
And that's why I guess I I asked that question, because do we need a a meeting in there to to go into it further or you you're good with it?
Uh, it's up to you guys. Like if you foresee the September agenda being pretty packed, um, maybe it would make sense to have a another meeting in between or maybe in between September and November, um, perhaps October somewhere. I'm I'm happy to to do what's needed, so maybe we can assess that in September. And if there are a lot of comments to go through and like, you know, if if there's a lot of work on that draft, then maybe we'll play that by year, if you guys are okay with that.
Yes, that's what I'm.
I'd rather be August than October, I'm sure we'll agree on that one.
Okay. So, we'll have to talk through that because, um, from a, uh, design and.
It's pushing it.
Narrative perspective, um, I'm not quite certain how quickly I can turn all of that out. Um, but it depends in August. Like if it's like a month from now, probably, um, but if it's like the first week of August, probably not, no. Might be a little bit too.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question, so I'm just sure we meet our deadlines and if we need to have a meeting, then now's time to talk about it as a group, so. Uh, I mean, I'm good. We can go through till September and see where we're at with that. If you get that to us towards the end of August.
Yeah.
Um, we should be all right with that, I think.
Yeah, I don't, unless are you guys like, is is there like a timeline from your perspective that you're hoping to have this plan like totally wrapped up and ready to go? I just wanna be sure meeting your expectations.
I was hoping.
You're hoping to some, but I mean.
Yeah, I was hoping to have it done by this year, unless it's pushing it and that's a little bit pushing what we originally talked about, but some of it's pretty basic stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like a really complicated, um, township to a point.
So, my only concern with that is that the state does require sixty three, sixty-three day comment period, so that's already taking out.
That's fine.
Two, over two months of basically a lull, um, so let me think if.
We could, we could roll with that. I mean, I I I'm looking forward.
I think we were, hell, we can, it'd be nice to have it done, but if there's a sixty-three day period once we get a final draft, I mean, that's that's. But the work's kind of done to that point.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's just waiting the sixty-three days for comments and then putting a final approval on.
Pretty much.
So.
So.
We can look forward to September to see what it looks like.
Yeah, so what we can do, um, is we can tentatively talk about maybe authorizing the township board to open up the sixty-three day comment period in September. So then theoretically, all of the comments and and the new draft would be ready to get kicked out to you, back to you guys in November. And then if you feel comfortable at that point recommending adoption, we can do it that way.
Yeah, that ends up gonna be October, right?
I don't, cause our meeting, our next meeting won't be till January, you know, I have to go on.
September, November, and January.
That's fine. This is go on as planned, so we're good.
Okay, and if that changes, like I have no problem. Um.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any questions for us?
Uh, no, I think.
Appreciate the update.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for being an easy group tour.
Yep. Thank you, thank you. You can stick around or you can go. It's it's up to you, so appreciate it too coming, so.
No problem.
Next on our agenda is solar and I put on here the table at till next meeting. I know our our next meeting will get a little bit further into the master plan, but, um, we want to continue to 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 just keep our eyes focused on that, so. We do, next on the agenda is our secretary opening. I know, Dave, you brought that up as far as, I guess, the board has talked about that. I guess wanna enlighten us all, I guess, again.
When we nominated Jake, Jenny volunteered to be recording secretary, um, if we wanted her to be. And then as far as paying her, that was up to the board. We still haven't totally decided on the extra twenty-five dollars a secretary usually gets going to Jenny as far as I.
That was if no one here wanted to be the secretary.
Yeah.
I guess that's, I guess that's a question that we need to take as a group. I mean, is there anyone here that wants to have that responsibility?
Uh, just based off of my experience last month, the last meeting, and then to now, I don't actually, while taking notes, I unfortunately don't have a lot of time to actually pay attention.
Right.
Other than, so I think it would be great to have somebody that's not in the voting capacity taking the notes. So I, I can see where that would make it very nice for everybody.
But I don't want to not have somebody, to have the opportunity to have that responsibility.
Like if Phil wants to do it, or Dave wants to do it, or Joe wants to do it, I don't have a problem with it. Like, if Jake wants to do it, I don't have a problem.
I would gladly give that responsibility to you. Like he said, you know, trying to take notes and.
Thank you, Dan.
Be actively involved in listening and, you know, giving your full attention to what's on the agenda, what's being talked about, um.
I I just think, uh, she's recording, cause that's like ninety percent of doing the 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 draft is off of the recording, because again, even with taking notes, you don't catch it all.
So hearing none, then I guess I'm gonna say then, um. Yeah. I'll make a motion to, um, for Dave to take back to the board to have, um, a note taker. Um, and I know Jenny has volunteered or has made the offer, I guess, um, for recording secretary, um.
Excuse me, but.
For for the discussion.
Does it have to go back to the board?
I don't think so, no.
Cause they already voted on it. Cause they already approved it.
Yeah, I mean, we approved it the last, I mean.
We just need to have a motion on.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. A second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Both? Um, motion carried. So, so being that they have approved it, uh, for what Dave's talked about, um, then, um, we will move forward with that, yeah, so.
Alright, and I'll do the minutes for tonight. I've been taking notes, so. You just hang on to your notes, Quana.
Which I would appreciate.
Unless you really want to, Quana.
Cause I can tell you, and I'm not here to speak for Brandy, but I mean, it it it's a task and.
It is. She's pretty good.
And I know she spent a lot of time just going back and listening and watching the video too that, um.
Yep.
That that they recorded there, so. So we're good there? Complaint form, y'all have a complaint form, right? Um, we talked about this topic, I think, last month or two months ago. And I and I give it back to you because I know Dave wasn't here for that. Um, and I know Dave has talked about that at previous, um, what do I say, um, meetings? And I included the copy that we have out there that I think that we've used in the past. Is that correct, Dave? The front page?
Yeah.
And I guess, I mean, I I whipped and did a lot of searching out there and I know this is the one I keep coming back to is from Dexter Township. I like this form. Um, I know it's a two-page form. Um, questions, comments, I guess. And I know, Dave, you're just seeing it for the first time tonight. I mean, it just kind of gives more detail. Um, it gives, you know, if there's a violation and what it consists of, I mean, um, um, talks about the citations and there there's, you know, what took place and. I mean, this could be obviously on file and it just, uh, you know.
I think it works. You got Dexter Township sample?
Yeah.
That's a lot better than ours. Ours doesn't have a a place for the person to complain to, to sign it.
Yeah.
Doesn't have a phone, a place for a phone number, and this other one's covers that and and then some, you know.
So when I'm there with Dave, when it says zoning ordinance, light ordinance, or other specifies, is there, I know there's three of them there, is there, should there be a fourth one before the other? Or is that pretty much covered, you need to cover?
Or the zoning ordinance, light ordinance, and other.
Type of alleged violation.
Yep.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah. I leave the other in there. I don't see it, but would be put in there, but it's good to have that there. Just, you never know what the future's gonna.
Well, I mean, part of it too is that's that's the part being filled out by the person making the complaint. They might not know. They just might know that there's something not right, they can put the info down, whether it's a lighting or a zoning.
Right.
There might be other.
Right. There might be something that doesn't get filled out and we'll make the determination after review as well. It would be my goal to have this online also. There, you know, with technology, they they could go on and and fill that out and when they hit the click form, obviously it would go to you, Dave. Um, and then the township to have a copy of it, a copy of it too on file, so, you know, this is to kind of follow through. So, everybody good with this? I don't wanna speak very late, but. So, what I'm gonna ask Jenny to do then is to Cato Township eyes this form, you know what I'm saying? And we can take a look at it at our next meeting to as far as the final, and then Dave, you can present it to them at the board to get their approval on it. I don't wanna step out of bounds on on that, but, um, yeah. Good? So. I guess we don't really need a a motion, because we don't have nothing to do with this point yet, so. Okay. Um, new business, land splits. And and I'm gonna spend a little time on this, cause I know we have a couple people, three people in the audience tonight that that talked about this. And I think you both, all of you here have, um, um, an email, I guess I'm gonna say, from them, um, talking about their situation. What should we consider? Updating that? Section, um, five? Cause it is section five, yes? It's a ag culture residential. Talking about, um, I know there's another section in residential that talks, so there's another section talks about land splits, but, um. I I believe this, the whole goal of this was to preserve agriculture.
I think it was definitely to to mitigate subdivisions in agricultural land, for sure.
And if that is the case, I mean, currently today, um. I'm not sure how things were taken care of in the past, but. We're moving on to the future and. What's that?
You know, with, uh, I just put something out there just for you guys to think about. Um, with that five acre minimum, I know we're our own township here, so you don't go by what somebody else has just because they have it, but, uh, that's the highest out of the townships I have. They go anywhere from one acre to two acres on per ag residential. You know, I just thought I'd throw that out, so myself, it doesn't affect me in any way, but five acres. To me, a lot of people wanna live out in the rural area, but not have a neighbor right there, and if there's a lot of farmland, you know, what preserves the farmland too? The state has it where you can't, uh, you gotta have a four to one ratio, so you can't, uh, go just two hundred feet wide and go a thousand feet back. That disturbs the farmland. I don't know, it just, my feeling, it seems like that's a lot if somebody just wants to live in a rural area and not have a farm. You know, just my opinion, you know, it's just.
With those other townships that have the smaller, like, land divisions, do they have, my question is, do they have, like, a different amount of splits that you're allowed for that property?
Yeah, now that's up to the, uh, the assessor does that part. If they ask me, I direct them to her, because she has records of from way back, how many splits were done, how many's available and all that, so I've always directed them to her and she always gave them the answer, so.
So the 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 major thing that's making this an issue is the the minimum five acre lot size.
Yes.
So if we were to change that, would we be able to change that with stipulations of what's allowed for these situations? As far as if it's for family, if there's already a house on the lot that they wanna split off, that makes kind of a huge difference. It's already a home. Um, I I I don't know if there'd be a way for us to change that, because if we if we make it one acre and then the splits are allowed, then you might have a bunch of one acre lots showing up and houses on them, so we're defeating our purpose, but in the situation that we're being presented with, that's not the case. But they should go through the appeals process every time that this happens as well, so I don't know if there'd be a way for us to reduce that to one acre under these guidelines.
So are you saying that there must be a a building there currently?
I'm not even saying that so much, because, I mean, how many people have these eighty acre parcels or forty acre parcel and they've had kids and they would like to give them an acre and not go into their farmland? I don't, I don't know. I know that in the one case, there's already a home there, so.
On one township I deal with, there's a minimum one acre.
And I don't disagree with.
The rest are two acres, but.
But yeah, it's, they're not wrong in saying that it's it's preserved farmland. Well, if we make them have a minimum of five acres and they only wanted one, there's four acres of farmland, then yeah, I'm sure they'll still farm it, but if there ever comes a day that that property sold, then they're not farming it, so we're defeating the purpose along with trying to protect the farmland at the same time.
Cause I'm gonna speak, I spoke to some board members around here before when that was initiated. And they were having problems when they went, hell, they had like an acre, okay? Then they gave it to the child, they got a different job, got divorced, whatever, had to sell it. Then it sits there and there's not anything to it. Well, somebody moves in that hasn't ever used it or been around a farm. First complaint they have is what the animals around there, spray's going on. Then the next thing, if it's an, it was an acre, next thing they wanna do is have another building. Well, then they can't put a building there. They bought the property, cause it was cheap, nobody else wanted to be around. They bought it, well, then they want animals, so then they wanna expand out more. Then they wanna bonfire pit. They come out here for spacing, for space in the city, didn't want any neighbors, well, then now they have one acre or two acres. That was the way that I was explained, that they, why they made it five acre. I mean, besides the point of not having a, you know, a whole bunch of homes, just put up, buy a forty and put it up. Now, I mean, uh, the other way, said they had, they, you know, if your existing homes on there, like the Bridges have an acre, that's great. Somebody could go buy the forty, build a house and say, hey, I got an existing house here, wanna sell it, and they could go build another house. So I mean, that's, the only way they figured out was do the five acres to take, to take care of, and stop the problem of having all that. I mean, I understand both sides where they're at, um.
Was there people complaining last time then? That was like two thousand twelve, I think.
Yeah, that, I mean, it's it's been going on, that's, I mean, it's been on since.
This is where we come out of that position, can't make everybody happy.
No, you can't make everybody happy, but I mean, for me, I know both sides. I can agree a hundred percent with the five acre and I agree a hundred percent on Bridges with the one acre. But I can still, I get mine every time we get a variance, ever somebody wants to put a building out there and they want, I mean, not the, let's say the Quackles, they've got, they bought the property, they can't be a bona fide farm, because they don't have ten acres, but they bought it because the buildings were there. I mean, that's still another hoop we're gonna still jump through, but it's still, I mean, they bought it thinking they could have a farm and enough animals and now they don't. So it's both sides. Now, I mean, if, let's say it blows, somebody buys a property around that forty, they start building houses around it, well, then boom, you can't be using it for deer hunting or shooting a rifle, because they got houses around the other two or three side. I mean, I'm not saying that could happen, but it's still a possibility if you wanna, he still has enough land there, they can split it out to what he has before he sells the house. I.
Another thing I have, uh, you know, I don't have a calculator, I figured out, but one acre is, uh, I don't know, what is it, forty-three thousand some odd feet square feet? And in our charts, we have for ag, for you to build a house, you have to have at least, if you're surrounded by ag, at least two hundred and fifty feet on each side plus the back. A one acre, is that even enough to, uh, build a house in?
I mean, that's.
So we'd have to change.
I mean, that's why he's asking me to put five eight, but it's still, it's hard for me being a farm, knowing what's on both sides of it, and I know why they put it in here. I know exactly both of their sides, but I'm split.
And that's when sometimes if you don't feel, or you wanna change what the zoning says, you can apply for a variance, but then that's not guaranteed, but it would depend on the circumstance. If, you know, a person wanted to go against what the book says, basically is what a variance is. And that's why they have it there for particular circumstances, I would think, I don't know. But then it's gotta be, either the category for a variance is unique circumstance, or the, you know, there's a lot of other things you gotta follow for a variance and it may not qualify for that. I don't know, I'm, you have to ask the ZBA or something like that.
Any further discussion? And Joe?
Said pretty much everything I was thinking. Same stuff, you know, not gonna make both sides happy, um. Yeah, you pretty much said it.
Should I ask Brandy? No.
I showed up here tonight just as, I I told the, um, the two parties involved that they needed to bring it to the land commission and I'll leave it up to you guys to to talk about it.
Yes, go ahead.
May I ask when this, uh, came into effect, this rule came into effect?
I think the ordinance has been out there a long time, but I mean, it was in twenty twelve, I think, is when the last time this particular topic was discussed. That's when the, that's when the the planning commission, should I say, updated the the variance, had a public hearing and and updated it. Went through the formal process. And I wasn't here then, so I don't know. I mean, Dave was, right?
That's what I wondered how, what we talked to, if it came into effect, you know, many, many years ago.
They've been on here a while. It's been that five acres for a long time. I mean, I think Henry initiated it, so it's been a while since he's been on the land commission, but he was here preserving farmlands.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll take a few comments here.
I'm gonna just ask the question, do you believe in your own mind that that somebody that just wants to live in a rural area, that five acres isn't an excessive amount? Which is taken away from the preserved farmland?
It isn't excessive.
I mean, I personally, personally, I feel no, because personally, I feel no, because I mean, if they want their space, they had, they have their area. I mean, if 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 they come up with one acre and we come up spraying up to their yard or two acres, that's the first complaint you hear about is drift. So if you keep five acres, however they wanna put their house and building on there, that's their five acres. We have to keep the drift, whatever airplane, whatever you have going on, it's a lot less complaints, I can see with the five acres. Now, if they wanna run it to the farmer that has it, that's their own choice, and they have to put up with their practices. That's where I'm at. Cause I've thought about this a lot, John, I really have, and if you dumb side it from five acres, you get a heck of a lot more complaints, there's a lot more spraying. I mean, it's not killing spray, it's fungicide, but in their mind, they see on the TV, it's killing spray, so that's what they bring it back to, so that's. I'm I'm, I know your exact spot, why you're saying one acre is great, but I just, I've seen too many places, I've drove around, I've heard from dad, I've heard from other people. That was for their child, given to them, I can see that a hundred percent why. Ten years down the road, twenty years down the road, now you have a vacant house, somebody's living there and then a complaint about everything, the farm, and the farm's been there for however many generations and then now they're complaining, the first one that moves out there and that's, that's where I'm stuck with the five acres. I mean, I'm just, I I know where you're at, I know both sides, I just can't, with the complaints, we we get it being a farmer and I've got, I can stand with the five acres. That's just mine.
Yeah, I'm giving up my guess.
I gave two acres to my daughter last year, build a house. They're building the house. They went and talked to the commissioner, Larry Gilbert. He said the five acres was a guideline, doesn't mean it's the law, but they can go wherever they want. That's what they told them, so they took two acres.
That's just down the road.
It wasn't holding up in court, that's in here, but, or, Dave, I'm telling you that right now, MTA, I mean, it wasn't.
So it's a five acre minimum, but like, could I apply for, we have almost six acres, could I apply for a variance to get a quarter acre? And like, get that approved for a small dwelling for like mother-in-law, and then it would be up to the ZBA on if they approve it or not?
Anybody can apply for variance, I mean.
I mean, in a hypotho- I mean, in a hypothetical situation, anybody.
Well, there's there's a variance process for the five acres now, and I think, two years ago, if you did two acres, that should have been presented through.
Could it be for like a quarter acre?
As as a variance, and whether it got approved or not approved, a lot, I mean, I built the poll by a variance because it was over the height restriction. What the variance process does for us is, there's always exceptions to the rules, these are the rules that blanket everything, so if we have thirty variances requesting for that same reason, that's when we say, we need to relook at the ordinance. Because this is actually, I've been here almost a year now on the commission, this is, so two of the same complaints at the same time, does give us cause to look at it and talk about it. Because.
That's what we're talking about, so.
Kind of, but if it's only every once in a while, then the variance is, that's what the variance process is to cover.
And it and it, and and I've been on here for a while, but I mean, this is the first time I've heard this, we've not had this complaint.
I mean, the biggest reason, cause Larry didn't follow the book, I mean, that's not pointing fingers, but.
And that could be. Yeah.
That's what it is.
Maybe some things happen behind the scenes that we're not obviously aware of at all, so. Uh you want to make a.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't wanna turn you.
I spent sixteen hundred dollars on the survey, it's no good, because Larry told.
Because I was told I could do that. I mean, it's crazy. How can you tell somebody what they want with their land, I mean, I just don't get it. Well, I mean, there's certain ordinances, I mean, that you have to follow when it comes to your land, but there's certain things you can do. But that that's why townships are, you know, have the zoning, so.
I would still own all the property around this house, I wouldn't break off, there's not gonna be any spraying going on next to it, you know?
Yeah, but I think what Dave was talking about that, he wasn't talking about, everything's going good, it's family, but eventually, they say down the road, maybe that divorce does happen, or. Maybe some point, the the land is sold, and, you know what I'm saying, and and we're talking years down the road, as far as when it comes to those complaints that he's referring to. With with all those things that are happening, I think, you know, just being a little honest, sorry. Um, we're gonna touch base on where Dave was talking about with the agriculture's setback, that two fifty foot, that's like a four and a half acre minimum with those numbers. But with that said, our house does not comply with that two hundred and fifty foot setback, which once again, that should have not been. But it was all part of a plot of land at one point, right, before you purchased it? It was, yes, the house was, the plot of land before.
Still not two fifty feet.
Yeah.
Now, that would be considered a pre-existing non-compartment structure, which we can't do anything about that, or the lot itself is, well.